Good evening and welcome to the Town Council Regular Meeting on May 6, 2025. It's a beautiful day in Garner and the buzz is feelable in here tonight. The excitement is so high. It's not just all the great presentations and petitions that we have tonight and proclamations, but I don't want to spoil the big secret, but Ms. Garner's teen is here tonight too. And that just added to the enthusiasm. So it is a great evening here. And with that, the meeting is called to order and we will please call the roll.
Mayor Gupta.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
And Councilmember Derringer, uh, Dellinger.
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tim Vance is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Gupta, we have Reverend Dr. Wolfgang Hertz Lane, who will deliver the invocation this evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Pastor Wolfgang. I'm the pastor and mission developer at Lord of Life Lutheran Church here in beautiful Garner, where all are welcome, no exceptions. We are on Buffalo Road right next to Lake Benson Park and I'm glad to say to you that we very much consider ourselves part of the fabric of this amazing town. Tonight, as we ask for a blessing, I thought I'd read to you the prayer, the peace prayer attributed to St. Francis. This is not the Pope who just was buried, but St. Francis, the saint that lived in the 12th century in Italy. But I'm also offering that in honor of the late Pope. But as I say the words, please think about what you do as a council and what we do as a town and how this really applies to all of our lives and to all that we do. So here's the peace prayer of St. Francis. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me so love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Wolfgang. Certainly one of my favorites and I want to thank you again for the wonderful little coffee mug you get, you gave me. I get a chuckle out of that every day. So thank you. And the next item on the agenda is petitions and comments and I'll ask our town attorney if anyone has signed up to speak.
No one has signed up for petitions and comments this evening.
Well, then I won't read the disclaimer. We'll go right to the adoption of agenda. These are a number of items that the council has had time to review. Staff is previewed, mostly of a routine nature, but if any council member feels that any of these items need to be broken out for individual discussion, we can do that. If there's not, or is there one that should be?
Just point of order, we adopt the full agenda before the consent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. Keep me on my toes here. It's been a busy day and it started at seven o'clock on my way from Hill Holly Spring. Thank you. We'll adopt the regular agenda. Thank you, councilman. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Vance and saying goodbye to Ms. Behringer for the agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Now to the fun part, presentations and proclamations. The first one has to do with Ms. Garner's teen. I'm going to call on Amanda Watson Bailey for introductions and then we'll have a few remarks from our own queen.
Good evening. We are excited to be here this evening. Mary Catherine Bearby and myself represent the Miss Garner Organization and we are proud to present to you this evening Campbell Marshott, who is our teen representing Garner in the Miss North Carolina Pageant in June. Ms. Garner is a pillar here in the town and we're so honored to have her come with you this evening to talk about her social impact initiative. She's a senior in high school here in Garner and has been a wonderful representation for the town already. So without further ado, we'd like to welcome Campbell. Thank you.
Good evening. As Amanda said, my name is Campbell and I am currently a senior at Garner Magnet High School and will be graduating with my international baccalaureate diploma in June. And in the fall, I will be attending UNC Charlotte to get my degree in photography. I ran for Miss Garner's teen, not just because of the scholarship opportunities, but because I wanted to give back to the Garner community. I've lived in Garner for most of my life and I wanted to give back to the community that has given so much to me. Through the Miss Garner Organization, I have the opportunity to promote my community service initiative called The Camera Collective, where I teach students about what it means to be body positive using my favorite thing, photography. I have worked with Partnership Elementary School in Raleigh, North Carolina, allowing children to learn about what it means to be body positive. And at the end of the class, we learn about what it means to use photography and how to write body positive affirmations about themselves and other people. In the Garner community, I have not just focused on my community service initiative, but I have also focused on my favorite thing, being Miss Garner's teen, is going to events and being part of the community. Being able to attend Garner events has allowed me to have a full circle moment of going to events that I've attended since I was a little girl and now going as Miss Garner's teen. This is my first year competing in the Miss America Opportunity and as Amanda said, in June, I'll be competing for Miss North Carolina's team. I'm excited to show what it means to be a Garner girl and I'm very excited to show that Garner truly is a great place to be on the Miss North Carolina stage. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's have a big hand for our ran.
Did I get to have a chance to have a photo op? It's not complete without a photo op.
There you go. Don't miss a chance, do you, Mayor?
Very good job of speaking, by the way, if I may compliment you. A very good job of speaking.
Yes.
I'll come back to that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pay a compliment to teen Miss Garner. She was all excited and, but you did a great job of speaking because so many people come up, especially the younger people, men and women, young men and women, and they got these notes right here in front of them with my worst iPhone reading off of it. But you made a great delivery. I don't think you glanced down, but three times and that is a very positive thing. So good luck and we expect you to come back a winner.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Singleton, comments?
Yes, I agree. Appreciate you coming here tonight. Appreciate you being proud of being a Garner girl and like Mr. Matthews said, you did a really good job with your, with your presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Behringer?
I just think it's great that she's chosen to be an example for other teens to follow. There are so many opportunities if we, if we pursue them and go forward. So thank you.
Good job and win.
Thank you for coming tonight and great presentation. Wish you best.
Thank you. Thanks again. And we move along to another proclamation this time. It's a little bit different because it's written on fancy paper, many words, but it's very meaningful. And this, this is for, to recognize Building Safety Month. Our presenter, who will join me at the podium briefly from now, is Paul Paget, our inspections director. But let me go ahead and read this and then we'll call on Mr. Paget for a few observations as well. The proclamation is Building Safety Month, May 2025. Whereas, whereas our town of Garner is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depend on the safety and essential roles our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play in everyday life and during disasters. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of our inspectors, planning and engineering departments, along with architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year round to ensure the safe design and construction of buildings. And whereas many of these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes and standards to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes and standards include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas the International Code Council sponsors Building Safety Month to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our development services department staff, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas game on, the theme of safety building, of Building Safety Month 2025 encourages all to get involved and raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider their commitment to improving building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local, state, tribal, territorial, and federal building safety and prevention departments in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Buddy Gupta, Mayor of the Town of Garner, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. And Mr. Paget, if you would join me at the podium, like have a few comments and present this to you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and guests. I want to take a moment to express my gratitude for the support and participation in the 45th Annual Building Safety Month. This worldwide campaign presented by the International Code Council, along with members and partners, aims to promote building safety throughout the month of May. This year's campaign theme, as you said, is game on. It encourages everyone to engage with all aspects of building safety. It highlights the connections between building codes and personal safety. It emphasizes the critical work done by building safety professionals in our communities. This year's campaign addresses how building safety impacts, impacts everyone on a personal, local, and global level. Week one is called the warm-up. Highlights how building safety impacts our daily lives, including the places where we work, live, and play. Week two is build your offense. Focuses on creating a plan to actively support building safety programs in your community. Week three is build your defense. Encourages participation for natural hazards such as, or sorry, preparation for natural hazards such as severe weather, wildfires, earthquakes, and more with our disaster toolkits. Week four is a starting lineup. Is a chance to meet building safety professionals and learn about rewarding careers, rewarding careers in building safety. And week five is going into overtime. Looks ahead to see what's next for the building safety industry, including global trends, artificial intelligence, and more. I want to thank our communications team for helping get these messages out throughout the month of May. And in Garner, our built environment is a collaborative effort. Our inspections department works closely with our planning and engineering departments. Over the past 12 months, these three departments have issued a total of 3,349 permits, 909 new residential certificate of occupancies were issued, 47,950 inspections were conducted covering just over 12 and a half million square feet of built environment. Thank you for the continued support of our development services department and I wish everyone a great evening.
Photo op. Any team members who would like to join us?
Got planning and engineering folks, if you'd all come up.
Were there any council members who would like to make a comment about our safety?
I would say congratulations to you and great work and, and we know that you will continue to represent Garner well and represent the citizens of Garner well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Just keep up the good work. Again, people don't realize you all are part of our public safety apparatus in town. So I think that's another thing to elevate throughout the month is how important what you guys and women do. You've got a mixed crew there.
Yes. Thank you.
I would echo those remarks. We appreciate the work that you do and so often we take it for granted and we really do appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
I had my office inspected last month. One of our fire marshals, so they're on, on the ball all the time. And one of those, one of those thousands of inspections you talked about, which is a lot. Thank you for what y'all do.
Congratulations to you and the entire team. All those numbers were amazing for such a small team to be turning all that kind of workout and hopefully you'll share those numbers with our public affairs people so they can post them on the website. I think the citizens of Garner need to know what all you guys will really do and that, those are unbelievable numbers. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolutely. A lot of great work being done on, big round of applause, please, for these folks. And another exciting proclamation. This one is close to home for a lot of us. It is very important. This is the Peace Officers Memorial Day, Police Week in Garner. And I'll read the proclamation here. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States through Public Law 87-726, signed by President John Kennedy in 1962, proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers' Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas Public Law 103-322, signed by President William Clinton in 1994, directs that the flag of the United States on all government buildings be displayed at half-staff on May 15th of each year. And whereas members of the Garner Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of town of Garner. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of the law enforcement agency. And that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Garner Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Buddy Gupta, Mayor of the Town of Garner, North Carolina, do call upon all citizens of the Town of Garner and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 11 through 17, 2025, as National Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating, commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Further, I call upon all citizens of Garner to observe May 15, 2024, 25, as Police Officers' Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respects to the survivors of our fallen heroes. And our interim chief Adams, please, if you would join me at the podium for your remarks.
Mayor and Town Council members, thank you. Ms. Miller, management team, thank you for supporting us, really everybody in the town. Town of Garner, Garner family's been very supportive of us for many years. There have been, when I wrote this a couple of days ago, it was 23 officers who had fallen in the line of duty this year. I had to mark that out and write 25. Since two days ago, two other officers have fallen. The majority of officers were shot and killed in the line of duty. There were 148 line of duty deaths last year and nearly 25,000 in the history of our country. When police officers leave their homes every day to start their shifts, they don't know whether they're coming back or not. It takes tremendous courage to face challenges that most people are unwilling to take. Officers are required to run into the face of danger when many others are running the opposite direction. Again, we appreciate the recognition you give officers, past, present, and future, because many of those are watching right now, paying attention to what we're doing. And especially to the ones who have lost their lives in the line of duty. Thank you. And I just found out also that again, during the National Police Week, we'll light up the front of Town Hall blue. And that means a lot to each of the officers that wear my uniform and all the other ones who come through our jurisdiction. So this means a great deal. Thank you.
Is there a photo op here with you? You have any members in your team that might be with you?
Officer Pattonoff?
Yes, you.
That being said, Mr. Matthews, any comments you'd like to add?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It's obviously a plant. We're very proud of our Garner Police Department and I think interim chief, you know as well as every member of that police department, if they don't know, I think they'll know by tomorrow that this board's got your back. No matter what you guys need, let us know. And I think I'm speaking for everybody and, because we don't want to lose a single officer in the line of duty and want them all to go home at night. And I know you're a growing force and as the interim chief, you're taking over a big responsibility over there and wish you well in that. And glad to have another young officer up here with you to take a picture with you tonight. She'll remember that for a long time. So congratulations and a job well done. And again, we got your back.
Thank you, sir. And that support is felt. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, for your dedication, all the officers of our department and other departments also. We see them here in Garner quite often, Eagles for Rob, and they're doing some of their, their training there. But it's important to recognize and support our public safety officials and to support our Garner Police Department. I mean, you're praised on so many people, not just in Town of Garner, but also in the Triangle area. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. That means a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Behringer.
There just aren't enough words to express our appreciation for all you do, the sacrifices you make. It sounds kind of trite, but it's true. We really do appreciate everything. Interject a little humor here. One of my neighbors used to be a 911 operator and he would tell us that if somebody committed a crime in Raleigh and headed toward Garner, they all just laughed because they knew the Garner police would get them. So thank you for your dedication, your hard work and commitment.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, just want to say that, I had to write it down. I was going to write it down. It's all over the place, but in Garner, the duty of our officers is an extension of their character. And I think one of the things I admire most about the Garner Police Department is that we train our officers to be the best people they can be, to defend and protect our residents and the constitution. And as long as they stand with the residents, the residents will stand with you. So just thank you all for everything you do. We always know we can count on you and the whole department whenever we need anything. We always know we can count on you and the whole department whenever we need anything. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I'd like to say to the Garner police and interim chief, your service is greatly appreciated. And your dedication to your duties, the risks that you all take, and the many citizens that you assist, and to include myself, I cannot express how much I greatly appreciate it and wish you the best. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's have a big round of applause for these guys. Our final presentation tonight is equally important, but a lot less glamorous. It has to do with the budget. And this is the formal presentation. We'll get some information from our town manager, Ms. Jody Miller, and part of her team. We won't be making decisions or holding a public hearing on this tonight, though there will be plenty of that stuff later on. There's room for input, lots of ways for input, lots of things to review. Ms. Miller, would you like to give us the overview?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight I present to you for your review and consideration the recommended budget for fiscal year 2026 totaling $87.4 million. I have taken a different approach this year to presenting the budget because sometimes telling the story with pictures is more effective. Hi, I'm Garner Town Manager Jody Miller, and I'm proud to present the recommended budget for fiscal year 2026, which starts July 1st. The recommended budget totals $87.4 million, a $9.9 million increase from the FY25 amended budget. It supports our foundation for a vibrant community and reflects the town council's top two priorities for the next fiscal year: consolidating with the Garner Fire Rescue Department and opening Jurgen Park, a bond-funded signature athletic amenity on Garner Road. The recommended budget maintains the current 52 cent tax rate, which includes 43.5 cents to support the operating budget and 8.5 cents to support the debt service fund. The budget continues building on the multi-year foundation adopted by the town council, which addresses opportunities and challenges associated with the town's robust growth. This foundation is strong, as reaffirmed by the outstanding credit ratings of AAA by Standard &amp; Poor's and AA1 by Moody's Investor Services in the town's March 2025 credit rating review. Garner continues to grow into a thriving and vibrant community. Our town's population has increased by 8.3% over the past year and currently is estimated at 42,227. This continued growth has resulted in an increase of 8.7% in the total assessed value of our tax base. The key foundations to a vibrant community include strong public safety, a multitude of parks and recreation opportunities, robust investment in infrastructure, and overall economic prosperity and well-being. The 2024 National Community Survey indicate high satisfaction for public safety, parks and recreation, garbage and recycling services, and stormwater management. I am pleased to recommend a budget that enables the town to continue to support these services without putting an additional tax burden on our residents. Our commitment to public safety is reflected in the town's priority to consolidate with the Garner Fire Rescue Department, creating a municipal fire department for the town effective July 1st. This is a significant step in establishing a shared vision for fire protection services in Garner and creating greater operational efficiencies and savings. To support the consolidation, I recommend adding six full-time positions to aid in the onboarding of employees, facilities, and vehicles from the Garner Fire Rescue Department. The town will gain 86 new full-time employees from Garner Fire Rescue, a 35% increase in the town's workforce. Three firefighter positions are also recommended in FY26 to assist with staffing demands as part of the consolidation. FY26 will bring new opportunities for our police department as we look to hire a new police chief. The police department has been fortunate to have strong committed leadership that has led to 10 national career accreditations totaling 30 years the department has been accredited. The town looks to continue this tradition and Cold Star standard in its search for a new chief. The FY26 budget includes more than $500,000 set aside for additional police officers and related resources. Garner Parks are another important foundation for a vibrant community. This budget includes staffing and resources to support the opening of Jurgen Park in the fall of 2026. The park will be a destination for Garner and the region, featuring four multi-use athletic fields, including two natural grass fields and two turf fields, as well as a large signature picnic shelter and inclusive playground. To prepare for the opening of Jurgen Park, this budget recommends 12 new full-time positions, including a Parks and Recreation Program Manager, four Parks Program staff, and six staff for grounds crews and public works. These positions are needed to promote and program the park and keep it in good condition for residents and visitors to enjoy. The town will also continue investing in the Penny for Parks program. $978,000 is included in the recommended budget to make improvements to existing park facilities, including the replacement of furnishings through the park system, scoreboard replacements, and alternative paths for cyclists and pedestrians at the Lake Benson Park Garner Veterans Memorial, and replacement of playground equipment at Greenbrier Park. Also included in the town's capital improvement plan is funding for the design and relocation of Lake Benson Boathouse. This popular facility will look for a new location and expanded amenities to better meet the needs and interests of residents. In FY25, the town launched a successful new public art initiative with the Wings of Hope sculpture on West Garner Road and art wraps on public utility boxes in several areas of town. I'm excited to recommend continued funding for public art by extending the $50,000 funding approved in FY25 into FY26. One issue of concern noted in Garner's National Community Survey results is affordable housing. To address such a complex issue, the mayor appointed the Affordable Housing Task Force in the summer of 2024. Task Force recommendations shared earlier this year featured a strategy of preservation while investing in additional long-term sustainable strategies. The recommended budget includes $100,000 for preserving home, our partner in housing preservation. This is a 50% increase from the FY25 budget that will be leveraged to keep residents in their homes, safely maintain the town's older housing stock, and preserve affordable housing in Garner. The National Community Survey results also called for greater focus on supporting ease of walking, travel by bicycle, and the overall quality of the transportation system in Garner. The capital improvement plan includes $100,000 annually to address traffic calming measures. These funds will allow for continued implementation of speed tables in town, as well as opportunities for larger multidisciplinary measures in more critical traffic areas. As we continue our rapid growth, the inspections department is seeing an increased demand for services. Plan reviews have increased almost 40% this year. As a result, the recommended budget includes the addition of one full-time position for plan review, which will be offset by additional revenue received from the permitting process. Code compliance continues to be a top priority to protect the town's quality of life and livability. To date, the number of code compliance cases increased from 694 to 746, a 7.5% increase in FY25 compared to the same timeframe in FY24. To assist with the increased workload, one full-time position for code compliance is recommended as part of the FY26 budget. The recommended budget also provides $810,000 for the public facility repair and maintenance program and $2.2 million for the vehicle and equipment repair program. In addition, the budget includes funding the town's performance merit system for employees, which enables employees to earn up to 4% increase annually and a market adjustment of 3% that will help Garner stay competitive in the regional employment market. All told, these investments in our community, our facilities, and infrastructure, and our staff will provide a spark to make Garner an ever more vibrant place to live, work, and raise a family. I'm proud to present this budget proposal and to serve as your town manager. I encourage you to visit our online budget portal at garnernc.gov so that you can learn more about the budget and offer your feedback using our online public comment form. Thank you for spending the time to learn about how we are investing in your community. I look forward to seeing all the great things we can achieve together in the next fiscal year. Right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to share that budget video with you. As we were putting the budget together and talking about how best to communicate the highlights and recommendations, it became clear that sometimes telling the story, it's better to do it in video and show the pictures and really show, when we talk about funding, when we talk about resources, what does that look like in terms of services and programs in our community? So I just want to review with you a few highlights of some of the numbers within the recommended budget. And this will be a point of our continued review and discussion on the recommended budget at your May 15 budget work session. So as shared in the video, the recommended budget is $87.4 million. It's a $9.9 million increase over the amended budget. It keeps our current tax rate at 52 cents. And of that tax rate, 43.5 cents goes to the town operations and 8.5 goes for debt service. This year's budget is a priority-based budget, as we discussed at your retreat in February, with two primary priorities for council in this budget, looking at the consolidation with the Garner Fire Rescue Department, as well as the opening of Jurgen Park. Garner's financial health and growth is a focus of the recommended budget. As we went through our credit ratings, being reaffirmed of our ratings, one of the things that the rating agencies noted was that the town is very stable, has very stable financial conditions, along with a strong and forward-thinking management team. We were reaffirmed, our AAA rating and our AA ratings by Standard &amp; Poor and Moody's. As shared in the video, our residential population has increased by 8.3%. Our residential permits by 15%. Assessed value at 8.7% and sales tax increase of 9%. Town priorities focused for the FY26 recommended budget is a continued investment in town employees. This is with enhanced benefits through our insurance plans, as well as continuing with our merit system of up to 4% for merit and 3% market adjustment. We're also investing in public safety, first with the consolidation with the Garner Fire Rescue Department. We'll have 89 new firefighters coming over to the town. We'll be adding six new town employees to support the addition of this new department. In addition to the consolidation with the fire department, also investing in our police department. And we set aside over half a million dollars for staff for the police department that can be used for whoever is named permanent chief to be able to make decisions on what those staffing needs to look like in next fiscal year. We also have added positions for Jurgen Park, 12 FTEs for both the park staff and public works to open that park. In addition to Jurgen Park, also in continuing to invest in council's program of Penny for Parks, going into next year, a penny is right under $980,000. So that will go for things like replacements of equipment and benches and scoreboards and those types of things at our existing facilities. We're also recommending a cost recovery strategies for our Leagues camps and rentals through our Parks and Recreation Department. This provides an opportunity to help cover some of the costs, the increasing cost for these services and programs and rentals, but also allows us to use some savings for some of our special events as well that continue to increase in cost. And we'll provide more conversation and detail about that strategy at your work session. The recommended budget also continues our work in investing in public art, with investing additional $50,000 in next year's budget. Looking at preserving home, our partner in helping us preserve the affordable housing that we have here in town, but also helping residents be able to stay in their homes safely. The current fiscal year has $50,000. Included in it, recommended in next year's budget is $100,000. This is really to address Garner residents who are on the waiting list with preserving home, to help get them the projects and investment they need to be able to stay in their homes. As mentioned in the video, we also have our traffic calming measures of $100,000 annually that will, that has been included in the budget. We've got for inspection staff, adding an FTE for plan review and codes compliance, and then adding an additional staff for information technology as well. So that provides some of the highlights of the recommended budget. The first time that we will get together and sort of go through the budget in more detail will be at your budget work session, which is scheduled for Thursday, May 15th. On May 20th, which was the next council meeting, that will be our official public hearing on the recommended budget. As council is aware, we do have an online portal that takes feedback and comment from residents. In addition to having the opportunity to speak at the budget hearing on May 20th, that portal will be open until June 1st. As part of your work session, we're going to provide you all the information and all the comments that we receive to date, so you'll have that as part of your discussions at your work session. We are targeting budget adoptions for June 3rd as well. So depending on our work at the budget work session, we may end up talking about the budget again at the regular May work session in hopes of targeting approval at your June 3rd meeting. So before I close out this evening, I just want to acknowledge and thank the budget team, Sarah Warren, Celeste Gore, Purcell, David Beck, John Hodges, Matt Poole, Mari Howe, for all their efforts and dedication to develop this recommended budget. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank the communications team, Rick Mercer, Kyle Ketter, Bella Saltz, for their amazing work on the budget video. Thank you for helping bring the budget to light. So with that, council, that concludes my budget presentation for you this evening.
Wow, fantastic. I take back what I said about it not being as exciting or as glamorous as the other three. If a picture is worth a thousand words, a video is worth a thousand pictures. That was a lot of information presented in a way that we could understand a lot of it, the big decisions that go in, the big takeaways of the growth that we have, as well as keeping the tax rate steady, our big accomplishments. Our hats are really off to your team. And also to make it clear that this is not the place that we'll be discussing or doing a deep dive on it. This is the official formal, formal opening of the budget process. And as you mentioned, we will have a work session on May 15th, a public hearing on May the 20th. The online portal is available through June. We do want feedback. We do want questions. We do want you to understand what's being done with your taxpayer money. And with that, I think we'll close this session right at this portion.
So thank you for your time and attention, and I look forward to working with you on your budget deliberations. So thank you.
Thank you very much for an excellent, excellent job. And now for the part of the agenda that I seem so excited to get to that I jumped on it early. This is the consent agenda, not the regular agenda. Thank you. This is almost as exciting as the stuff you've seen, but really not. But these are a number of different items that council and staff have been working on, have been lumped together into the consent agenda that we can pass as one mass decision. Or if any council members feel that there's a particular issue in this group that needs to be brought out for other things, let's hear about that now. Any items that need to be broken out for individual discussion? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Singleton by a hair and seconded quickly behind Mr. Matthews. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, the consent agenda is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Now moving right along to some public hearings. And we have a couple, and we have one of each kind. So let me remind you about what these public hearings are like and what we'll be doing. In a general way, our first public hearing is a legislative hearing, which does not require sworn testimony. However, all person interested in speaking must sign up with the town clerk. Town staff- Town staff will present a brief presentation, followed by the applicant, and other persons who wish to comment on the item will be recognized to speak. Council requests that groups of individuals with the same position to designate a representative to speak for the group. And the first one that we will be dealing with is item number one on this agenda, which is the voluntary contiguous annexation petition related to 2109 Clifford Road. And I can see that our presenter tonight, contrary to what it may say on your program, Planning Director Jeff Treisenberg is out at the moment, but Second-in-Command Aaron Joseph is going to give us the overview of this item.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members, members of the public. I will briefly present the annexation request for 2109 Clifford Road. This is, as the mayor stated, a voluntary request for annexation into the corporate limits of the town. The site is generally located in the southeastern area of Garner. This is general area here. And the site is located on Clifford Road, at 2109 Clifford Road. It's between Bryan Road and Hebron Church Road. It is a contiguous request. The site is 1.07 acres. This request stems from a request to connect to public water and sewer. The current zoning is rural agricultural, and tonight the request is to adopt the annexation ordinance. And there is a representative, the property owner, here if you would like to ask any That's all I have.
Okay, and the applicant is here, available questions if we have, if we have any. And with that, I'd like to recognize council members who might want to ask questions about this particular annexation. Mr. Matthews?
No questions.
Mr. Singleton?
No, sir.
Ms. Behringer?
No questions.
Mr. Dellinger?
No questions.
I believe this is something we've looked at before, and falls right in with a larger master plan, I think.
Well, this is a single site, but it is here on the screen. It's just a single-site, single-family residential, so it's not associated with any other master plan.
Okay, thank you. And I'll ask our town clerk if we've had anyone sign up to speak, or our town attorney. Has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No one has signed up for this.
Okay. Hearing none, and no questions from the council, we will now close the public meeting, and we'll ask council members if there's a motion, and there could be some more discussion if we need it. Is there a motion to approve or adopt this ordinance?
So moved, second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Vance and seconded by Mr. Matthews. Would there like to be any discussion, any other discussion about this before voting?
No discussion.
Okay. If not, hearing none, I will ask for all those in favor of adopting this ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Joseph.
Thank you.
Okay. And that brings us to the second public hearing this evening, and this is related to a special use permit for Garner Sixth Industrial Project. I'm going to read the details of the difference between a quasi-judicial hearing, very important, as you'll see as we go through. Each council member during a quasi-judicial hearing is required to disclose whether he or she has a fixed opinion prior to the meeting that is not subject to change, or had any ex parte communications, had any close familiar business or other associational relationship with an affected person, or a financial interest in the outcome of the case. This is a fact-finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses, based on training and experience, may testify as to the impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. All persons wishing to testify or provide comments must be sworn in by the town clerk. Any of those who are here tonight, please proceed to the back corner of the room to And the presenter for the town, Planning Department, will be Mr. Linsky to give us the staff presentation.
Mr. Mayor, if you could accept the staff report into evidence, one line, one line above his name.
Yes. The staff report is offered as evidence in the case, and will be accepted into the record unless an objection is raised by the applicant or another person with standing. And now we'll go to Mr. Linsky's.
Thank you.
Presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, and everyone here today. Here to present SCP SP 24017, Garner Sixth Industrial. The applicant is Taylor Hollingshead with Bolton &amp; Mank. The property owner is Christopher Archer and the trustee, trustee of Christopher Archer Revocable Trust. And today we have a special use permit for the approval of one industrial warehouse building that's 236,000 square feet on a 33-acre tract of land on Guy Road just south of US 70. So a little bit of context, you've already seen this case a few months ago when it came in for its tier-one rezoning. So during that time, there was some overlap with the special use permit and site plan that was reviewed by our technical review committee. And it was also annexed on February 4 as well, too, at the same time. The property, excuse me, is surrounded by Garner Town Limits, Garner ETJ, and Wake County and Johnston County properties, kind of just on the edge of town, near the county line, and water is readily available, and sewer will be extended to the site from US 70. Here, the use, is the use table from the rezoning that was approved, that research and development was removed there. So what they're proposing does fall under that flex space, other light industrial manufacturing and warehouse. I'm going to go over the zoning conditions briefly. I won't dive into too much detail because you've already walked through a lot of these, but wanted to point out, they, because of the size of the building, they do have that 150-foot setback from Guy Road. They did create a, an open area for staff in the back of the building that is, you know, intended for breaks for people working. And then the tree cover on the site does exceed the 15%, the minimum required, which we'll get to in a moment. The, the conditions did have quite a few, you know, elevation or building design requirements, so staff did review each of these and their elevations to make sure they met them. And some of the, some of them include the materials, which have a lot of masonry form liner and the design of that. They do exceed the transparency requirements for the office areas. A lot of the industrial portions of the building are exempt. And then lastly, they do, they did use accent colors as well, too, which we'll see in a moment, and did meet the other requirements proposed here. So in terms of the comprehensive plan, this does fall within an employment center. That's the, kind of the blue area in the middle in the land character type. And in our framework, it does just touch a community activity center. And then in terms of development intensity, it does fall within a level three, which does call for more intense development with, that would serve the community with jobs and services for residents. In terms of neighborhood meetings, they did have their two formal meetings for the special use permit. There was another one also requested as a part of the rezoning case. And then recently in, in February, staff met with some residents just to the south of this property, and the applicant met with them regarding the same concerns that we discussed with them sometime in March. So there were a few other meetings not documented right on here, but just want to give that So here is the, the site plan that they have proposed. Again, a 236,000-square-foot building. A lot of the property is covered with wetlands, so a lot of it is undevelopable. They do have minor encroachments to the south where that drive kind of extends from Guy Road to the back and the docking areas. And a lot of the interior is already cleared. In terms of stormwater, they are retaining for the 1, 10, and 25-year storms, and a nitrogen offset payment is required as part of the development. Landscaping and buffers, so one of the topics of conversation with the residents that we met with was the, kind of what the appearance would be like from the southern portion of this property. And as I mentioned, a lot of it, the interior is already cleared out, so we worked with the applicant to ensure that the buffer could be planted as best as it possibly could, given the site constraints with the wetlands there, because they can't plant in there. So they, they are meeting the requirement, even though there are some parts in the buffer where they're not able to plant. We were able to work together to supplement that with some plantings closer towards the building. They will have street trees along Guy Road. And then to the total camp pre-coverage, that minimum 15% is exceeded, and they are proposing 33%. And again, a lot of that is area that couldn't really be developed with the wetlands there and has already covered in trees. Here's an exhibit from their space that they created for Garner, or excuse me, for the employees of the, the business that's to be there to gather and, you know, commune during breaks. Their total open space is 1.7 acres, and they do have some picnic tables and benches in here, too. The site does meet the requirements for lighting onsite, and then they will be providing street lighting offsite on Guy Road as well. Here are some closer images of the elevations for the building you can see that meets the, you know, the conditions that they proposed. Again, a lot of the UDO is exempt for industrial portions of the building, so, you know, a lot of, like the glazing and whatnot is, is applied to the, the office areas here. In terms of parking, their calculations were one per 1,000 square feet of floor area. So they do have 137 currently designed in here with another 100 pending that is already accounted for, so they have the space for it. And I think part of that will depend on, you know, what type of tenants move into the building, because that will modify the use. So with the, you know, the flex space and, you know, the use as it's listed, there are kind of, you know, there's a little bit of variability in there, so that 100, those 100 spaces are kind of pending what that ultimate use is going to be. The site does meet the radius requirements for emergency vehicles. The north access is a right-out-only, but it does have the, the surface material for an emergency vehicle to enter there if needed, or to exit there. And the, I guess, in context to that, the, the southern entrance is full access. In terms of utilities, water is available on the site, and as I mentioned, the sewer will be extended from US 70 down Guy Road. Frontage improvements on Guy Road include railway dedication, widening sidewalk, and curb and gutter. And a TIA was received with the application as well. There was no FEMA floodplain in here, but the state DEQ did designate the wetlands, as you see them there on the left, the kind of shaded area that's being preserved. And next we have our conditions of approval, as identified by staff in the TRC process. So I won't go over each one of these, but most of these are standard, except for the, you know, the wetland and buffer impacts, so I'll have to provide documentation for that. And they are already going through construction drawings to meet some of Raleigh's requirements and, and engineering's as well. So they do have construction drawing approval after this as well. Last, I'll direct you to page 86 for motion options in your packet. So I'll take any questions, and thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you. And let's ask council members if they have any questions for staff. No questions?
I don't have a question, but just for the official record on page 84, it seems to be the wrong parcel image in the council packet in the agenda.
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, that was from the Wilmington Road Industrial, which I meant to point that out, so thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, just wanted to be on the record since it's a quasi-judicial.
Yes, yeah.
No questions, though. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Behringer? No questions? Mr. Singleton?
No, sir.
Matthews?
Oh, nothing.
Okay. And you have some, the applicant here to make some comments.
Oh, there was a power switch. There we go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Mark Frederick with Parker Poe Adams &amp; Bernstein at 301 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which is Maris, or previously known as Al Nair. This special use permit hearing is the, just the next step in the approval process for a rezoning case that, that you saw a few months ago, as well as the annexation. So we're excited to be back before you tonight to move this case along. I'll provide a brief reintroduction to the site and the request, but we do have several experts here tonight that will speak directly to the special use permit approval criteria. But first, I'd like to request that the application, site plans, TIA case materials, and our presentation be accepted into the record. Great, thank you. So Mr. Linsky did a great job of providing a lot of the details on the case, so I'll be brief here. I just wanted to point out a few details. The site is surrounded with that red highlight. It is located just south of Highway 70 and largely surrounded by industrial uses to the north and west. That parcel you see just north of this site was recently developed with a similar industrial use. But the areas to the south are largely residential, and our experts are prepared to speak to that. There are a few specific details on the site plan that really helped with that transition that they'll speak to. So again, we have several experts here, and before I turn it over to them, I wanted to put up the findings of fact here, just to really draw your focus and focus your attention to those as you hear the testimony. But tonight we have Mr. Hollingshead with Bolton &amp; Mank, the lead engineer for the project. He'll speak to how this request and application complies with the town's development code. Mr. Josh Ranky, also with Bolton &amp; Mank, he is the traffic engineer consulting on this project. He'll speak to the project's anticipated traffic impacts and the proposed mitigations. And finally, we have Mr. Hunter Howell with Paramount Commercial Appraisers. He will speak to the project's compatibility with the area and how the proposed use will impact, or will have potential impacts on the adjoining property. So I would like to call our first, first witness, Mr. Hollingshead.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. My name is Taylor Hollings- My name is Taylor Hollingshead. Our office is at 418 South Dawson Street in Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm a land development project manager with Bolton &amp; Mink.
And can you please explain your role in the project?
I've overseen the layout and site design, as well as managed staff throughout the whole design process starting over a year ago.
I'd like to tender Mr. Hollingshead as an expert in the field of civil engineering and site design. This slide does include the site plan. Mr. Hollingshead, can you please describe the overall site plan and its conformance with the town's code?
So the site plan that you see on the screen has gone through several rounds of review with town planning staff. We've worked with staff to refine the plans, and we ensured that the site plans conform to the applicable development standards in the town's code. We've also incorporated several changes based on comments and concerns we've heard from neighbors at the community meeting. I'll provide some high-level details, but I'm happy to dive more into specifics if you all have any questions. The project includes, one, 236,530 square foot industrial building and the infrastructure required for this type of building. Approximately 17 of the 33 acres will be disturbed for this project with a total impervious area of 11 acres, or approximately 33% of the site. The truck court is in the rear of the building, while vehicle parking is placed between the building and the street. A private lift station pumping sewer via forest main up towards Highway 70 is located near the northern driveway entrance. And the stormwater retention pond is located at the rear of the building. Stormwater retention device has been reviewed and meets all local and state standards. And Maris will be required to enter a formal maintenance and operations agreement with the town. As you can see, there are wetlands and riparian buffers on the eastern and southern portions of the site, which have pushed our development area to the northwest portion of the site. This helps create a natural buffer to the residential area to the south. A total of 12 acres, or approximately 35% of the site, is covered in tree can sweep preservation.
And can you please explain if this site plan is consistent with the approved zoning conditions?
Yes, this plan complies with the zoning district and all the zoning conditions, which were approved by this council back in February. There are a total of 21 conditions addressing permitted uses, landscaping, site features, pedestrian movements, or pedestrian improvements, and basic building standards. At the time of zoning approval, this council also found the zoning and permitted uses to be consistent with the town's adopted comprehensive plan. Several of the zoning conditions were specifically introduced during the rezoning in order to mitigate concerns from nearby residents. This includes reducing the building height to 50 feet, increasing the building setback from 75 feet to 150 feet from Guy Road, and expanded landscaping to create more visual screening from adjacent properties. The building height proposed by this plan is reduced even further down to 46 feet.
And does this plan meet the town's transportation requirements?
Yes, this plan incorporates the town's requirements regarding widening of Guy Road and pedestrian improvements along the frontage, as well as internal to the site. The future transportation plan calls for a three-lane widening. And following DOT regulations, we're responsible for widening our half of the road, which is being done. There will be a left turn lane into the southern entrance, which will help accommodate truck traffic. Then there's also a right turn lane into the southern entrance if you are heading north on Guy Road, which is a D cell lane to allow traffic to slow down as they approach the driveway and get out of the way of traffic behind them. There will also be sidewalk placed in the right of way and the stormwater infrastructure required to handle the roadway improvements.
And in your opinion, is the project consistent with the town's adopted transportation plan?
Yes, this project includes all of the town's required transportation improvements consistent with the transportation plan and zoning requirements.
This slide is a portion of the landscape plan. Can you explain how the project is, and the landscaping ensures compatibility with the surrounding area?
So we wanted to specifically include this landscape plan sheet in the presentation to help show how this plan is providing a transition to the residential uses to the south. The image is zoomed in on the southern portion of the site. And as you see, most of the area along the southern boundary will be undisturbed wetlands. But we have packed in as much landscaping as possible in the areas that can be disturbed. This includes landscaping along the site driveway and additional landscaping along the shared boundary with the property to the south. Gary and Christine, who are the neighbors adjacent to the south, we've met with them and they've already agreed, or we've put together a formal agreement for us to access kind of the pocket that's surrounded by the wetlands, to access that via their site because it's the only way to get there. So we have a formal agreement in place with them to install all those plantings.
And are there any other features that mitigate the impacts of this proposed use?
Yes, so we've included shielding on all the outdoor lighting fixtures on this property. And we have even lowered the height of the lighting fixtures on the southern end of the building to avoid any impacts to the south. We've also added a screen wall extending from the rear of the building to screen the truck court as much as possible. This is the line you see on the plan, the little red line that kind of sticks out to the landscape island in the southeast corner of the building. These features were not required by the zoning conditions, but were added based on conversations with neighbors out on the property.
And in your opinion, does this plan provide effective and appropriate buffering between this project and the residential uses to the south?
Yes, it is my professional opinion that the proposed landscaping, along with the undisturbed buffers, provides effective buffering and appropriate transitions to the residential uses to the south of our property.
Now looking at the rendering for the building, 13 of the zoning conditions approved in February related to the building architecture. Can you address those conditions and confirm that the project complies with them?
The project's architecture has been reviewed by staff to ensure compliance with the zoning conditions. And I can confirm that they do comply with those conditions. This includes incorporating decorative brick form liner elements at the entrances, base middle cap painting scheme to manage the vertical scale, varying the heights of the panels, enhanced glazing, and architectural metal accents near the building entrances to draw the attention to these areas. The building also replicates the prototype that has been successfully used at the Garner Business Park, or the Garner Business Park.
Before we move on to our next witness to deal with transportation, are there any questions for this witness?
I'll ask the council.
No questions.
Yeah, I have just a quick timely question. So the rezoning was approved in February, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you mentioned you got at least one neighborhood meeting and several meetings with neighbors after the rezoning. Were there any substantive changes made between the rezoning and the special use permit?
The meeting onsite was really for us to go out and kind of see the view from their property. We've just added more landscaping along that buffer, as well as the wall that, yes, the wall that kind of sticks out there blocking the truck dock. So it's just an eight-foot panel that matches the building. So it almost looks like an extension of the building from the southern view.
And you mentioned you'd reached into an agreement with the neighbors.
Yeah, so Gary and Christine, they live at the property just adjacent to our property line. And so we have an agreement in place to access and use their driveway to install those plantings. Otherwise, we would have had to disturb additional wetlands to access that area.
So the special use permit gave the opportunity for residents to help you mitigate some of your impacts of your project?
Yes, yeah, and they've been great to work with, so all good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good question. Ms. Behringer, questions? Mr. Singleton?
No, sir.
Mr. Singleton?
No question.
We have seen this one a number of times in a lot of detail. And some good information that you're presenting here. Did you have some other witnesses?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, our next witness is Mr. Josh Ranky. Could you please state your name, address, and your occupation?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Josh Ranky with Bolton &amp; Mink, transportation engineer there, 418 South Dawson Street, Raleigh, North Carolina.
And what was your role for this project?
Do you want me to do credentials first? There you go. Registered professional engineer in the state of North Carolina, bachelor's of civil engineering from Valparaiso University. I've got, I'm pre-qualified to do traffic studies and specifically school traffic studies with NC DOT and over 22 years' experience. And my role with this was I did oversee the traffic impact analysis for this project.
And I'll tender to the council, Mr. Ranky, as an expert in the field of transportation engineering. Could you please summarize the TIA process for this project and the eventual findings?
Sure. So as I said, I did the traffic impact analysis for this. We follow NC DOT guidelines, as well as the town's development ordinance. So when we did this traffic study in July of 2024, that was for the rezoning. And, oops, sorry. And essentially, we looked at the total development area of the building as 236,600 feet, which is slightly larger than what is actually proposed as part of this. So we're a little conservative with that, which is always the good way to be. You know, we did follow Institute of Transportation Engineer guidelines for the trip generation based on that square footage. This would generate 940 daily trips, which is slightly under the development ordinance, town's development ordinance requirements, and it's about a third of what the NC DOT. But our peak hour trips were slightly higher than what the town's development ordinance. So we have approximately, I think it was 145 inbound trips in the morning. So that's kind of your peak as people are obviously coming into work. And in the evening, you had 65 outbound peaks during that PM peak hour.
And did the special use permit application incorporate all the recommendations from NC DOT in the town?
Yes, so as shown earlier, the driveways, we actually went above and beyond. One of the northern driveway, the NC DOT recommended a right-in, right-out driveway. We further restricted that to a right-out only. But the design of the curb and how that was designed to allow fire trucks or any sort of emergency vehicles, as it's always important. It will allow them ingress or egress there, but for actual vehicles, passengers, vehicles, the trucks, they're going to be restricted there to an egress only.
And in your professional opinion, do these improvements effectively mitigate any potential traffic impacts caused by the project?
Yes, following the NC DOT and town's recommendations with the improvements we discussed with the turn lanes and such, this would mitigate the traffic. With all these improvements, it is my professional opinion that this plan will support the proposed use and maintain appropriate levels of service for not just the driveways, but the broader area.
And before we move on to our next witness, are there any questions for Mr. Ranky?
Yes, sir.
My concerns, as stated at the public hearing previously, was having been down there many, many times over the years at the intersection at the business that are located, the front side of Highway 70, the convenience store, and seeing the traffic back up all times during the day, particularly traffic hitting north. That was one of my biggest concerns is the impact here. And they used to be 145, 146 inbound in the morning, but leaving, there's only going to be about 65 or so. I always wonder what should happen to the other 80 people, are they sleeping over or what? But anyway, I always am interested when I hear those. That's the biggest concern I have because I've seen the traffic back up to this location, land. And that's the biggest concern I have is that despite the improvements to the road, the residential projects, which are further south and east of this, which you're all aware of, are continuing to multiply. And so to bring additional traffic there, and the main way out is Guy Road. So that's just the biggest concern. This will continue to add to the traffic issues that they currently have. And I know it meets the standard and all that, but you know, we proved things here that meet the standard. And even after it meets the standard, it will still have the level service, level, service level will be D still. So at other projects, I'm not saying here, but that's just the concern I have is that the traffic will continue to back up there. And it's not going to be any better, even with you wide in the road. So that's my concern, stated before and stated again.
Would you like me to cut, like, I like to nerd out and to cut and explain the IT, but if it's just more of a concern, but I'm happy to comment on that if you'd like?
Well, no, I mean, I can see with my own eyes. I mean, the studies know that, they're great. But again, when you see the cars sitting in line, it doesn't matter, you know, what we're going to do, broadening the lane because you're going to make it for three lanes, but until the other side's done. It just, the impact because of the other development down there also, not just your development, will add to it, it's just going to increase and add more traffic to that intersection where substantially at certain times of the day.
Good question, legitimate concerns, maybe things that are not, as you said, Mr. Singleton, not directly the result of just this project, but a culmination of everything that happens downstream, perhaps, on Guy Road. And certainly, we want to be in communication with NC DOT, see if there's any relief possible. But that's part of the ongoing concern in a lot of places, I guess. Thank you for bringing it up. Ms. Behringer, anyone else questions for this witness? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next witness is Mr. Hunter Howell. If you could, please state your name and address for the council.
Yes, my name is Hunter Howell. My office address is 412 East Chatham Street, Cary, North Carolina, 27511. And I'm a professional real estate appraiser, and I work with Paramount Commercial Appraisers.
And can you please explain your role in this project?
Yes, I was engaged by the applicant to examine this development's impact on the site and the surrounding area.
I'd like to tender Mr. Howell as an expert in the field of property appraisal and impacts of new development. Great. And before we get to Mr. Howell's testimony, he did prepare a report that his testimony will be based on. I do have copies of that, and I'd like to pass them out and enter those into the record. All right. Mr. Howell, can you please explain your analysis and findings to the council?
Yes, in order to evaluate the finding of fact regarding whether the proposed use is compatible with the adjacent uses and proximate neighborhood, I evaluated the localized market and surrounding land uses. The market profile within a three-mile radius includes a population of 18,910 with 7,893 housing units for 2024. These numbers are expected to grow at a similar rate to the general population growth in Wake County, which is just under 5% over the next five years. These statistics indicate a stable population base that is conducive for proposed industrial development to accommodate the population growth in the area. I also reviewed the surrounding land uses. This includes the Garner Business Park and Garner Commerce Center, which are located just north of the site. Both of these industrial developments include five buildings each ranging from 128,000 square feet of total space in the Garner Commerce Center and 863,000 square feet of industrial space for the Garner Business Park. The site is also immediately bordered by industrial land uses to the west and north. Based on these immediate surrounding land uses and coupled with the densities of existing industrial developments, the proposed development is in harmony with the uses and development in the surrounding market. The proposed industrial development is also of modern design and incorporates appropriate buffering and landscaping for both commercial, industrial, and residential uses, ensuring an effective transition between different, differing land uses. Therefore, it's my professional opinion that the proposed project adequately protects other property from potential adverse effects of the proposed development.
And another finding of fact for the special use permit is whether or not the proposed project will impact, will have impacts on adjoining property values. Can you please explain your analysis of that finding of fact?
Yes, I specifically evaluated whether the proposed use will substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, which is, again, one of the findings of fact for the special use permit. The proposed industrial development is adjacent to single-family residential dwellings along the southern property line. It is common for single-family residential developments and industrial developments to be located within the same general areas within a particular market. Typically, these developments coincide well together. However, to demonstrate that the proposed industrial development will not have a negative impact on the surrounding single-family residential developments, we have surveyed two industrial developments located in Garner and the adjacent residential values, respectively. This is the best indication to determine whether residential values have been impacted from an industrial development, is to research home sales located beside a similar type of the proposed development and compare the sales with residential home sales not located adjacent to the type of proposed development. This paired sales analysis was performed to determine if homes located adjacent to industrial development impact single-family residential home values. As you can see on the screen- As you can see on the screen there, Bannister East Industrial Park is located south of Highway 70 on the east and west side of Management Way. To determine the impact of this development on residential values on the surrounding single-family residential homes, we researched home sales located adjacent to this development along with home sales located on the opposite side of the same subdivision. To limit variabilities on your built size, quality, we relied on the sales all within the Sheldon Place subdivision. And as you can see, the average price per square foot for single-family homes adjacent to the industrial park is the exact same as the single-family homes not adjacent. In addition, I conducted the same type of analysis for homes near the White Oak Business Park located south of Highway 70 on the east and west side of Raynor Road. Based on the average per square foot values, we found no measurable difference to being located adjacent to industrial development. Therefore, it's my professional opinion that the proposed use or development of the land will not substantially injure the value of joining or abutting property.
Are there any questions for this witness?
Thank you.
All right. Before I wrap up, I'd like to briefly summarize the evidence you just heard and how it relates to the required findings of fact for a special use permit application. With respect to the first finding of fact, Mr. Hollingshead explained that the application complies with all applicable environmental and life safety standards. And Mr. Ranky explained that the recommendations from NC DOT are incorporated into the design of this site in order to promote safe vehicular and pedestrian circulation. With respect to the second finding of fact, Mr. Howell presented case studies showing that the proposed project will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. With respect to the third finding of fact, Mr. Hollingshead explained that the application complies with all applicable requirements of the UDO. With respect to the fourth finding of fact, again, Mr. Hollingshead explained that the application is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, transportation plan, and the town's UDO. With respect to the fifth finding of fact, both Mr. Hollingshead and Mr. Howell explained that the proposed project adequately protects other property from potential adverse effects of this project. With respect to the sixth finding of fact, Mr. Hollingshead explained that all stormwater runoff will be captured, treated, and released in compliance with all state and local regulations, and that the existing wetlands are preserved by the plan. With respect to the seventh finding of fact, Mr. Ranky explained that the public transportation facilities along Guy Road will be improved to support the proposed use and maintain levels of service for the broader area. And Mr. Hollingshead explained that improvements to public utilities are appropriate for the scale of development. And finally, for the last finding of fact, Mr. Hollingshead explained that the private onsite infrastructure, such as the stormwater pond, will be maintained through a formal maintenance agreement. So, based on the competent material and substantial evidence presented to you tonight, we are requesting approval of this special use permit application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, I'll ask our town clerk, town attorney, has any other individuals signed up to speak?
No members of the public have signed up for this public hearing this evening.
Okay. Well, then I think we can close the public hearing and see if we want to have some discussion among council or to consider a motion to approve the special use permit. So, the hearing is closed. Thank you very much. We may have another question or two. Thanks for sticking around. And now, I'll ask the council members, is there a motion? And then we could have some more discussion if necessary.
I find the application SUP SP 24017 meets the town's eight criteria for special use permits as identified in Article 4.7.4.D. Therefore, I move the town council approve SUP SP 24017 Garner Six Industrial with the seven site-specific conditions recommended by the TRC to be listed on the permit, on the permit that will be prepared by staff.
Okay, motion by Mr. Vance, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, second. Is there any other discussion council would like to have on this before taking a vote?
I'd just like to acknowledge that for items 5E and 6F on compatibility with adjacent and proximate neighborhood uses and also significant adverse impacts, that the applicant has been able to address those through the special use permit process and have met that requirement.
Okay, good. Thanks, thanks for the detail. Any other observations or comments before we ask for a vote? Okay. Well, you've seen the presentation, the SUP, the discussion, good questions asked all through. There's a motion and a second to approve the special use permit. I would ask that all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, the special use permit is approved unanimously. Thanks for the great presentation. Thanks for the hard work of staff and our applicants through the previous years to get to this point. So, a big milestone. We look forward to seeing it come out of the ground. And thanks to all the neighbors who participated and helped improve the product as we went along. So, life has changed, that's a good use for this property. Thank you all very much. Okay, with that being said, I'll look to the agenda and the next item would be new and old business. And to my knowledge, there is no new or old business that needs discussion this evening. Okay? Well, then we move along to committee reports. I'll start with Mr. Matthews, if there's any report from a committee under your jurisdiction.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Singleton?
No, sir.
Mr. Behringer?
Nothing new.
Mr. Dellinger, committee report, or Mr. Committee Report?
Yes, I have two reports to make. One in reference to the HR committee. I'd like to recommend that Ms. Katie Davis, Davisson, and Mr. Roger Thomas be appointed to the Board of Adjustments.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, and then that needs a formal vote, the approval on that one? Okay. Would you repeat the motion for, make sure everybody heard?
Yes, I move that Ms. Katie Davidson and Mr. Roger Thomason, Thomas be appointed to the Board of Adjustment.
All right, there was a motion for the two appointments that are second. If there's no questions, then I'll ask, all in favor of approving that appointment, those appointments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, they're appointed unanimously. Good work, HR Committee. Thank you. Thanks for our volunteers stepping up.
And one other thing, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add that today, the task force, the Affordable Housing Task Force, met with the TCC to discuss affordable housing and how we can work with the development community in providing affordable housing that is a win-win for all parties involved. And we looked at and we basically brainstormed and looked at various ways of how we could do several things that could possibly help us achieve the town goals when it comes to affordable housing. It's still a work in progress, but from a personal, from a personal position, I'll allow Mr. Dellinger to chime in as well, and also the others who were there, I think that it was a good dialogue, a good start, and looking forward to continued communications to try to see how we can continue to achieve our affordable housing goals with the town.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Dellinger. Would you like to add?
Yeah, just, I want to thank staff for bringing the group together to have the conversation at this point in the process. I think there was, I would describe cautious enthusiasm in being able to work together and find something that is different. I think the expectation in a lot of places has been a very demonstrative on the part of the town for engaging the development community, and I think they appreciated the outreach. They had some really good and interesting feedback, some of the stuff we had talked about in our committee as well. So, I think moving forward, hopefully, we can find a good common ground as we start to make some more formal recommendations and then doing our public outreach with regards to our affordable housing, attainable housing strategy.
A fantastic, I can't say enough good things about what our Affordable Housing Task Force has done. This was just another step to make sure we're open and transparent, clear involvement of many different parties in the communication. It's all about communication. It's always startling how similar our goals are at the end of the day, but sometimes we start out in almost opposite directions. But good communication, we find out we're not that far apart. So, hats off to your task force and all the people and all of our development partners who participated in this very important dialogue. Thank you very much. Let's see, any other committee reports? Hearing none, we'll move along to manager reports. I bet there is one.
Yes, Mayor, just a few reminders for council and the community. First, the town is hosting the first Friday Family Flicks in the front lawn of Garner Rec Center this Friday. Activities start at 7:15 and a free screening of Moana Two starts at 8:15. So, it promises to be a fun event. More information is available on the website. Second announcement is the town and our citizens and police together members are partnering with the local veterinarian to hold a rabies clinic in North Garner Dog Park, which is located at Garner Recreational Park on Saturday, May 10th, from 8:30 to noon. And so, just wanted to make everyone aware that that clinic will be available and more information is available on the town's website as well. And finally, the town is partnering with Civic Federal Credit Union for a free document shred event at the rec center on Friday, May 23rd, from 10 to noon. So, all great activities and services coming up this month. That's all the, that's all the updates I have for this evening, Mayor. Happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Hearing no questions, we'll move right along to attorney reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder that the School of Government is hosting quasi-judicial procedures training tomorrow from 1:30 to 4:30. I believe all of you have been registered and should be receiving your link. If not, let me know in the morning and we'll get that straightened out. Not all quasi-judicial hearings go as smoothly as the one tonight, so there will be probably good tips for dealing with some of those issues that come up.
Thank you, thank you.
And I and other members of staff will be attending that training as well, as well as members of the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Department.
Very good, very good. And we get to council reports, one more around. The council, was there any report outside of the committee report that you might want to comment on? Start with Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question, I'm getting a lot of, since I live close by and see it every day, that when is the Lake Minsom Boat House and Fishing Facility is going to be open? Because people are parking all up and down that road, on the banks, under the bridge, and everywhere else, somebody's going to really get hit and hurt. And everybody's, when is it going to officially open?
So, it will open sometime this month. I'll need to look or find out from our, Rick, do you have that information?
Thanks, 16th.
Or Rick, Rick has that information.
May 16th, that's correct.
From the website.
For the season on May 16th. And we'll have that out in the newsletter, which has been out in social media, but we'll also push it out in the newsletter, which will be coming out next day or two.
May 16th.
Yes, sir.
You go to the website, it pops up as the first thing you see. It pops up and shows that on there that the boat house will be open.
People ready to go fishing, go boating. Any other council comments?
I have one, Mr. Mayor. Some of us attended the city vision for the League of Municipalities last week. And last, last year, when I came back from that conference, I suggested that we explore participating in their program of, called Commit to Civility, which we did. We were the first municipality in Wake County, excuse me, in North Carolina to, for all of our council members to complete that training. And at this last week's meeting, we found that only six municipalities in the state participated, and we were at the top of the list. So, hats off to Garner for taking that seriously and using it accordingly.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Dellinger?
You skipped over me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there anyone last tonight?
How uncivil of you.
This is, this is a nice, a thank you for the work that's been done through public works to the pavement contract. They redid Fifth Avenue, which looks, which needs some attention, and it's been repaved, resurfaced, milled, resurfaced, improved, re-painted, lined, so it looks good. There was a nice chunk of asphalt had been missed up there at the intersection for some time that was on our side, but it got remilled and cleaned up, really looks good up there. And I noticed some other servicing projects also that look good, but that one was one that needed it from one end to the other. So, just want to mention that and thank you everyone.
Yes, it's a good time of year to do some paving and painting, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, if you want to know about painting again, what, I don't think anybody's mentioned what the town staff did painting the crosswalks down the street. Have we talked about that? I never get tired of it. I saw the picture again in one of the videos tonight, and it just pops out. A great event, all done by the administrative team, department managers, they really worked hard. So, you were finished?
We finished. Yes, sir.
You good?
I'm good.
Mr. Dellinger?
Yes, it's budget season. Everybody knows I love budget season. I'm going to have to up my game this year. I think I'm going to have to do an AI-generated music video of my comments to compete with the video we saw tonight, but that was really cool. But yeah, just looking forward to budget season and the conversation. Things are going well, but we've got a lot of work left to do on long-term planning and CPI and stuff like that, CIP. So, looking forward to that and encourage everyone to be involved and pay attention to that process and submit comments if you have them so we can evaluate them at our retreat or budget meeting next week.
Thank you, Mr. Vance.
I would just like to mention, just this past Friday, the documentary PTSD, The Invisible Enemy, with executive producer Tim Stevens, was showed, shown at the GPAC, was very well done, PTSD relative as it impacts veterans. The veterans were out there supporting and there were a number who were in the actual film were there as well. So, it was really interesting to see that. And as we know, Mr. Stevens, he doesn't do anything halfway, does it very, very well, it's a very well-done production. And my hats off to the veterans and everyone who participated in that.
I believe it's going to be shown on PBS in May. What are the, do you know the dates? I think May 20th it pops into head, but I don't remember.
Yeah, if you find out, if you, if you do find out, let us know that we would certainly like another chance to view that as well. Thank you. Okay, well, that kind of concludes our items on the agenda. I believe we have some items that need to be discussed in a closed session.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Staff is requesting a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143.318-11A4 to discuss economic development.
Do we need a motion to move them to closed session?
So, move? Second.
There's a motion and a second to move to a closed session, per the town attorney's advice. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Hearing none, we will move to a closed session and we'll be back a little later. Stick around or don't. Thank you. Thank you.
And we have returned to the open session from the closed, and I'll ask our town attorney to give us a little recoup of what we did.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town council met with staff to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of businesses in the area, including a tentative list of economic development incentives, and provided direction to staff, but no official votes were taken in closed session.
Okay, that was the end of the closed session. Now, I don't think there's any other items on our agenda for the open session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move by Mr. Matthews, second by Ms. Behringer. All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Thank you, meeting adjourned.